We have one here to the second meeting of the month. We're going to call it Brother Paul Crowley from Woolmarket Baptist Church and give us a word.
And former employee of Harrison County.
She says it every time. I'm trying to live it down.
Your hair color has changed.
Certain things won't go away.
Your hair color's changed a little, but some things won't go away.
All right. Hey, let's pray together. Father, we are so very thankful for all that you do for us. So often, we talk to you about what we need, what we want. But Lord, this morning, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the day that you blessed us with, the health that you've given us, the freedom that we have, and Father, the opportunities that we have every day to make a difference in the lives of other people. And Lord, I pray that you'll help us to remember that that is part of our purpose here on earth, to glorify you, and in doing that, Father, we touch the lives of others. Thank you for this board and employees for this county. Father, I pray your blessing upon them as they conduct business today, that you give them wisdom and insight. And Father, for employees as they're working, that you'll keep them safe and, Father, that you'll allow them to be productive in what they're doing. And Father, for us as taxpayers, for us as citizens of this wonderful county that we live in, Father, help us to be the kind of citizens that will draw others here. They'll just see and know that this is the place they can come and find acceptance, they can find love, and that they can find grace and mercy. Father, we thank you for your grace, for your mercy, and for your love. Thank you for expressing your love through your Son, Jesus Christ, who gave his life on the cross for us. It's in his name that we pray.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you, Paul. We ask this by supervisor, Connor Rock, to give us an indication.
The handover of hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I may, Mr. President, could we amend the budget to include agenda one, two, three, and four, and also to allow Ms. Engle, said that her take, to address the board?
Yes, give motion for an agenda.
Second.
Second.
You don't have to discuss all the papers they have. Most papers. Okay. First, we're going to recognize Sharon, Shanna, the Bordelone?
Bordelone.
Okay, to discuss the clothes closet.
Morning.
My name is Kristen Stisher Allen. For those of you who do not know me, I'm a local real estate broker associate here on the coast. I'm the proud mother to three amazing boys, the proud wife of a police officer, the proud sister of three other police officers, and the proud adopted sister to many other first responders nationwide. My family history consists of a long line of public service, and I not only served our communities, but our nation as well. I grew up in a home that instilled morals and values in me and my siblings. Growing up, we witnessed the actions that my parents and those that surrounded us displayed, which taught us what having the heart and the passion to genuinely help others consists of. My parents instilled in us that honesty and integrity mean everything, and that without them, you have nothing. We learned that integrity is doing the right thing even when nobody is watching. But most of all, we were taught that doing the right thing is often the hardest thing to do, but to always stand up for what's right and what you believe in, even if you are the only one standing up, and that is why I'm here today, to stand up for what's right. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my friend Shanna Bordelone, the clothes closet, and the fate of the items inside the closet that are currently inaccessible due to the actions of Judge Mike Dickinson. I would like to ask that the following statement go on record and be reported in the notes of this meeting. The donations that myself and many others donated to Shanna were donated for the sole purpose and intent of helping anyone in need here on the coast without any stipulations or prejudice. They were not donated to the Harrison County Youth Court, a program within the youth court, nor to Judge Mike Dickinson. I would also like to mention that while there is only a handful of us in attendance here today, this room would be full of supporters if not for the conflict of their work schedules and the timing of this meeting. I know that all of you have received quite a few emails from many donors, including myself, in regard to this situation, and I would like to take a moment to reiterate what a few of those say. From Stephanie Stewart Bruce, Shanna is the most honest, giving, caring, and genuinely good person I know, so much that I made her the godmother of my firstborn child. Long before her career started with Harrison County, Shanna has been a helper. There is always, they always say, in bad times, look for the helpers. It has always been Shanna. She has inspired me on so many occasions to help strangers in need, and of course, these days are no different. Shanna Closet's tradition started many, many years ago. Before her career with Harrison County began, she was still Shanna Closet. She would surprise strangers by paying off their layaways, and she helps countless people stress a little less at Christmas time. From Cassandra Lawless, several times when families in the community were going through crisis due to uncontrolled events in their lives, I, myself, and others directed them to Shanna in the closet. It had nothing to do with youth court. Please consider this project that Shanna has been doing is for the good of the community she lives in and loves. From Danielle Williams, she has always taken and donated these items under her name. She has always been forthright with all of, with all of the donors and has always made a huge impact in the community and the lives of all of those around her. Melissa Martin, Shanna has given so much of her own personal time and devotion to prepare to gather donations from all of her family and friends to just be ripped away from her in such a manner. Not only did he, Judge Dickinson, take away from Shanna in the community, but he took away from all the donors as well. I have personally given trailer loads of donations to Shanna. From Megan Harder, my donations were made strictly to Shanna herself so that she could use it for the foster families and to help others on the coast in our community. She did this for such a long time and was able to help so many people. I felt like my contributions were stolen when this was taken away from her. From Judge Alfonso, Shanna had a wide network of family and friends she could call on when a particular, particular need was identified and a family beserved. I remember at Christmas, our children's playroom was absolutely filled with the toys she had accumulated. There is no doubt that some of our children would not have had a Christmas without these donations. I do not remember that one of the trailers had been set aside for her donations, but it very well could have been. It is not something I would necessarily remember because it was never a problem. Shanna was always filling a need. Now, I would like to take a moment to give you a little bit of a backstory and tell you how I met Shanna. I'll try to make this clear. In 2011, I was attending a Mad Drive-In memorial service that was honoring those that lost their lives at the hands of drunk drivers, to include my best friend of 18 years, Deanna Tucker, who was killed earlier that year. Shanna and I had several mutual friends, and although we had briefly met in passing a few times prior, that night, I was formally introduced to Shanna by one of those mutual friends. Shanna was a guest speaker for the event that evening, and she got up on stage and began telling her story of when she was hit and almost killed by a drunk driver at 29 years old. You could have literally heard a pin drop. Our event was held outside, and despite the surrounding noise, she had the full attention of the audience. I remember standing there, listening to her story, and admiring the immense amount of strength and courage that it took for her to be able to get up there and share her story with hundreds of people that she didn't know. That night, despite her having to relive the horror in the aftermath of almost losing her life, as well as the emotional trauma surrounding it, that is still in the forefront of her mind today, she still chose to get up there and share her story in hopes of helping others. Many may not know this about Shanna, but she has spent every single day of her life since then living in excruciating pain as a result of someone's choice to drink and drive. Yet she still does all that she can every single day to help make a difference in the lives of others. For several years, Shanna and her husband Troy and their son Ethan have adopted families in need for Christmas. The first year, they started with one family, and each year since then, it keeps growing bigger and bigger. Several years ago, we all started calling her Shanna Closet because her hard work, dedication, and passion in organizing such a long project has brought and continues to bring so much joy, happiness, and beaming smiles to the faces of the families that she has helped, just as Shanna Closet does. If it weren't for Shanna, many families here on our very own Gulf Coast wouldn't have had Christmas at all over the last several years. I have included several social media posts reflecting Shanna Closet. Despite these posts only dating back to 2017, she has been doing this for years. Please note that the time she began doing all of this, Judge Dixon was an insurance lawyer. He was not in office, nor had he even began running for office. Over the years, Shanna and I have been a part of many things that are much larger than ourselves, but they have always included the mingles of helping and making a difference in others' lives. Every event, every fundraiser, anything that I've ever done for the benefit of and/or to help others, I have been able to count on Shanna every single time. Shanna and I share many of the same passions. We are both married to police officers and share the same passion of rallying support and honoring their fallen and/ injured brothers and sisters in blue. Oftentimes, while performing their duties as police officers, our husbands encounter children and/or their families that are in need. Each time, we have always gathered what we could, but oftentimes, we weren't able to fully help, as we had hoped, because we don't have the correct sizing and/or the clothing items needed for a little girl, as we all have boys. When I first heard about Shanna's next adventure, which was collecting items for the families in need, I was ecstatic and leaped up the opportunity to donate. I knew that when my husband crossed paths with another family in need, all we would have to do is pick up the phone to call Shanna, and she would help them. Shanna has come to my house on several occasions to pick up donations. I have witnessed her go out of her way to spend her own time, money, and gas to collect these donations. Not only does she go out of her way to collect them, but she also takes them to her home, washes them, sanitizes, sorts, and organizes every single one of them. I know for a fact that at the time, that she and her husband, at the time, a Harrison County employee and a police officer, have spent over $2,000 of their own money to cover the cost of her increased water bill, purchased laundry detergent, hangers, storage bins, and whatnot for the closet. When Shanna officially began in the clothes closet in August of 2019, she made a post asking for others to not toss their items that they no longer needed, but asked them to donate to her instead. Her post stated that she still had to get permission from Judge Dickinson to be able to use the trailer to store it. At the end of the post, she states, "Oh, and Judge, I need to set up a meeting with you to ask permission for this when you return from that conference." He commented a response on her post and stated, "No need to set a meeting, go for it. I have plenty of hangers for you." I have attached a copy of her post, as well as his comment for reference. Attached to her post are pictures that reflect tons of donated items that she had already collected, which further proves that she began collecting these items prior to August 2019. I have also included several posts reflecting her asking for donations. Not once does it state she is collecting them on behalf of Harrison County Youth Court, Judge Dixon, or anyone else other than herself. Not once does she state that the donated items would only be used for children and/or their families of the youth court, or for those who are enrolled in a specific program through the youth court. Not once have I seen anyone else other than Shanna and her family help or put in the work that was needed to establish this closet. I have also included several posts showing that Shanna, along with her husband and son, are the only ones who have spent countless hours, a ton of their own money, as well as be the ones to put in all of the hard work and effort in collecting donations in their own time, washing, sorting, organizing, building, shelving, and everything else included that has made the clothes closet what it is today. Furthermore, Judge Dixon had never expressed an ounce of interest in the clothes closet until he decided that he wanted to obtain this grant. He has never contributed a single minute of his time, effort, money, or anything involved in the closet and its contents, yet he took it upon himself to claim ownership of it for writing it into a grant which is awarded with limited use to only children and their families that are enrolled into a specific program within the youth court. A program that only had eight families currently enrolled in it at the time that all of this unfolded. That closet is so full of clothing that you could literally clothe half of a large city. To date, that closet has been able to help clothe hundreds of children and their families in need, no matter the circumstances. For someone to make such a selfish decision without any regard as to who it will affect, such as the one Judge Dickinson made regarding the closet, that not only hinders the use of the clothes closet to a point so low that all the contents would literally become nothing more than dusty shelf pieces, just literally baffles me. How is that acting in the best interest of anyone, let alone children and their families, especially during a global pandemic when so many are struggling? Why would he all of a sudden claim ownership to something that he has never had anything to do with and that truthfully, he knows nothing about other than its existence? The truth is, Judge Dickinson was acting in the best interest of himself, without a single bit of regard as to how it would affect anyone else, more specifically, affect those who are truly in need, all in efforts to obtain this grant for his own benefit and financial gain. On the last day that Shanna was employed, prior to her termination, she made a comment to Valerie Underwood in regard to donors being upset and were going to send emails to the Board of Supervisors. Valerie responded to her by saying that the donors sending an email to the Board of Supervisors would ruin the grant for them, which further proved that all of this was strictly for Judge Dickinson's benefit and financial gain, as well as the reason behind him claiming ownership to the closet and that without it, they would not be awarded and/or lose the grant. Even further, this proves that he felt Shanna was a threat by standing up to him because if he loses the closet, he loses the grant, which is exactly why he cowardly terminated her. The lack of respect and the amount of arrogance that has been displayed by Judge Dickinson has me extremely concerned and a bit appalled, especially for someone who took an oath to represent the best interest of children. I, as well as many others, cannot help but to feel that this is all a result of a personal vendetta that Judge Dickinson formed against Shanna because she chose to stand up for him, or stand up to him, not just for herself, but on behalf of every single one of us that donated to her, as well as every single child and their family that these items were intended for. Because she chose to stand up for what's right, it's blatantly obvious that he felt she was a threat to him and his grant, and he, in the most cowardly way, terminated her employment. At the time of termination, Shanna was currently in the midst of helping eight families, all who are in an extreme vulnerable state and currently fighting the biggest battles of their lives, the battle to try to overcome addiction, all while trying to keep their families together in doing so. She was literally their lifeline, but was suddenly ripped away at the hands of a man who was angry because she stood up to him. Upon termination, Judge Dickinson also blocked her from being able to reach out to these families with whom she was currently helping, which has the potential to cause irreparable harm. Again, I would like to ask, how is that acting in the best interest of those that he serves? What is even more alarming in all of this is the fact that Judge Dickinson seems to have a history of getting rid of anyone who does not bow down to him and his agenda, or who chooses to stand up against him. To me, this is no different than the situation that arose between Judge Dickinson and Casa in October of last year. His actions are now extremely similar to those that he displayed last year when he ripped away those that were currently helping abused and neglected children, all over a personal vendetta that he had against the director. I'm standing here before all of you today to stand up for what's right. Shanna is now a registered nonprofit. I'm asking you all to do the right thing, and that is to release all of the items into the custody of Shanna so that she, they can be used for the purpose and intent that they were donated and collected under.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Does the board have any comment?
I think Facebook alone shows proof that she had been collecting these things, and Judge Alfonso, in her email, said this very same thing, that they have been, she had been collecting these items many years before Dickinson was ever on the bench. I would, I would be fine with releasing it all right back to her because of that.
I don't have an issue with that either, but I'd like to hear from our legal.
Legal.
Because we can't, she was collecting it in, in the name of...
Well, I think this shows it wasn't in the name of youth court. It wasn't.
And you can look at the pictures and see it was all under her. It was never, nothing was ever collected under Harrison County Youth Court, Judge Dickinson, the, a program, nothing. It was all strictly to her.
The problem, my concern is, again, I have no issue with turning these over to Miss Bordelone, being distributed to needy families and children at all. Problem is, that I see is the county, a county employee being paid by the county using county property, and this board had no knowledge of it. I don't know how that happened, or it looks like it just, it just happened without any approval by the board. So if, generally, the law is, if somebody donated something to Harrison County, as I said before, then that becomes county property, and you must follow the laws dealing with county property and disposal of it, including donating. So, I mean, I don't know who it belongs to. The only issue I see, looking at some of the Facebook messages, I did a quick, just calendar thing, it's during the work hours, during the week, that this is being collected. That's, I just don't know how that fits into whether or not it's being donated to the county under Miss Bordelone individually. I don't know how you reconcile those things, because my understanding is, part of your employment, Bordelone, was actually doing this, this work, this clothes closet?
That was never in my job description, ever. I asked Judge Dickinson for permission, because I was seeing clients at the trailer, if I could store the things there, and Valerie...
Let me state the name for us, just to clarify.
Shanna Bordelone. Valerie Underwood got permission from Pam Olrich to use, for me to use that space to store this stuff in, but...
Let me ask you some questions so we get it all the right. Is your position that the items were donated, were donated to you individually and belonged to you in order to dispose of them as you saw in need, right?
Correct.
So no items, there's no receipts given to anybody from Harrison County? Nothing with Harrison County's name on it, so they could maybe take a deduction for it, anything like that?
No, sir. Um, I...
No paperwork of that?
No, nothing like that. I was, the reason I asked for a meeting with Judge Dickinson about that is because I didn't know if it would be something that I would do with Harrison County, with youth court. And when he said, "No, just go for it, no need to meet," that's exactly what I did. My son and I took on that project, and, I mean, weekends, holidays. We have over 1,000 hours of our own time in there.
And it's the position of, I read the emails as quickly as I could, of a lot of positions of the people that donated, is they donated to you individually, not to Harrison County.
Correct. I never mentioned, never mentioned Harrison County or youth court. And as I explained to Judge Dickinson, I didn't know the legalities of that, and I assumed he said, "Go for it, your project, do it." So nothing was ever mentioned about Harrison County, youth court, nothing.
It was never limited to just clients of the youth court?
Absolutely not.
Donated or provided to, whatever its families in need, needed it.
Absolutely. Anybody that contacted me on social media or tagged me in a post, I would ask for their sizes, I would go and collect what they needed, and then meet them or bring it to them. But no, it was never limited to only a certain group of people.
So it's your position before this board today, that you own the items that were donated to you individually, items in the clothes closet, belonged to you, and you want the board to turn possession of those items over to you so that you can do what you were doing before, distribute them to the children and families in Harrison County in need?
Yes, sir.
That's your request to this board?
Yes, sir.
I think that's up to the board to make that adjudication determination. You might want to discuss it in executive session, because there are some personality issues involved here that if you want to...
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Excuse me. Were there ever any advertisements or proclamation from you in any way advertising what you were doing, or putting out information that those clothes were available to needy people?
Yes, sir, it was on the social media.
Okay, and, and I haven't had an opportunity to read any of that. Was any of it, was there ever mention of Harrison County or anything?
No, sir.
Because I hadn't had the chance to read it.
The only thing that says anything about youth court in there was that, because I worked there, if someone wanted to drop donations there, they could come to Beloxi, call me, and I would come out and meet them at my car so we could transfer them from one vehicle to the other.
And that's why I reached out to Judge Margaret Alfonso, who's been on the bench for many years, because I wanted to clarify, how did they end up in our property in the Harrison County trailer? And that's why that email from Judge Alfonso makes it clear, I think, it was never a problem. Shanna filled the need, and we just, she never got our permission, but I'm sure, obviously, Margaret Alfonso allowed you to put the things there. Is that how it happened?
Um, yes.
She said Pam did.
Pam allowed us to move into, so I was seeing clients in the small trailer, because when we moved from Gulfport to Beloxi, it really hurt a lot of the people who couldn't travel because Gulfport's centrally located. And so Judge Alfonso allowed me to see clients in those trailers, but I only used one room. So when I asked for permission to use the other part of the trailer to store the stuff, that was, I was given permission to do that, that was fine, and then Valerie got permission for me to move from that half-trailer to the big one in the front, and that was the permission that she got by email from Ms. Pam Olrich.
That's right, Pam.
Yeah, it was around 2019, but it was requested through Ms. Underwood for the youth, but mine was for the youth court, that's what it was being used for.
Can I understand that the grant is for the clients in need? You were made aware of the need through the clients, and you only, and you did that personally? That's, that's the sequence, correct? Or were there other needs throughout the community, and you just helped everybody?
Oh, no, I helped everybody. Anybody that requested, I did not deny them.
Whether they were clients or not, correct?
Correct, correct. I never denied anybody. If they sent me a message or they were in need, I didn't question it. I said, "Okay, give me your sizes, what you need." I would collect those items and get them to whoever was in need for them.
And that's very admirable, and we thank you so much for that, and your dedication to it. Thank you.
And the grant was specifically for what? You're speaking of a grant. What was the grant for?
This is the grant that...
It wasn't our grant, it was through...
That's why I'm asking, Mom.
The Family Intervention Program got a grant just a couple of months ago.
That's through the youth court?
Yes, sir.
And the grant money was spent for what?
They haven't received it yet. That's what he's been asking us to approve, but the fact that he's putting, remember he put the visitation center as part of his grant, that we weren't even aware that it was happening there? We denied that. He's also put all of her contents as part of his grant, as the resource center, I believe?
Yeah, I believe it was, it stated something about a resource closet that they had, and I don't know if that was listed as money that they put out, but there was, the only money that was put into that came out of our pockets.
Can I read one thing for the board to consider that I think is important? And I think the answer to the question, what's important to me about this is this post is on January the 3rd, 2020, at 9:53 PM, so she's obviously not at work. This is the clothes closet, I assume that's your social media post?
Yes, sir.
Facebook, whatever you call it.
The devil. Sometimes.
I'll read this to the board, because I do think it's important, because it's about a state of mind as to what she believed she was doing. And I quoted, "9:53 PM on January 3rd, 2020, the clothes closet was started to help children in foster care, as well as other families in need in Harrison County. Donations of clean, gently-used clothing, no stains and tears of all sizes, infant till adult, as well as shoes, baby items, and furniture are accepted. Since starting the clothes closet, I have been able to partner with other people and organizations in the community. That being said, any items donated that I'm unable to use," and the word is "I" is important, "unable to use," "are donated to the homeless, animal shelter, the women's shelter, or any other organization that is able to give donations to those in need without making a profit. Please note that this is strictly voluntary work. I do not get paid or make a profit. That's not, that's not why I started this. My job allows me to do this in my free time. My 12-year-old son, and I also volunteer a lot of time in the weekends. Our reward is being able to help our community. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to shoot me a message." And what's important about that to me, this, this post was done way before any controversy arose. It's a statement by her about what she understood she was doing, and that it does not appear that she was doing this as an employee of Harrison County. And I agree that the statement certainly supports that these items were not donated to Harrison County, or did not become county property, and they belong to Miss Bordelone, if that's the board's wishes. Now, only caveat to that is, I'm sure we may hear from someone else that's going to say something to the controversy. I don't know if the board wants to wait and see if there's a contest of that, but my only concern is that county property was used to some extent to store this without permission of the board. I understand you didn't give that, but you're not charged with it. Your responsibility to determine what the, who gets to use county property. We understand, county has authority, it could have let you use it, but this board was not aware of that until much later, and then at that time, it was presented as being part of the youth court. So with that being said, I think that's a strong statement of intent and purposes. Now, you do understand that you've obviously gone and gotten now a nonprofit, there is an issue that when you take donations from people, that you could be taxed on that. Now, you can also deduct donating it to others. I mean, I'm just telling you, we can't, we're not the judges of that. The board's not the judges of that.
I didn't know any of that until October of 2020, because...
I only bring that up because Judge Dickinson brought it up at some point in time about taking donations when you had not qualified as a nonprofit.
Right.
I don't know the laws of that at all. I stay as ignorant of taxes, other than what I owe, as I tell you.
Right. I hope that you would be punished for doing such a great thing for our community.
No, I don't think you would be punished, but that's your responsibility to figure that out now.
Right, and I...
So if we turn it over to you, if somebody sends you a 10-9-9, you know, you can get 10-9.
When I went through the process, I did explain to them that I had been doing it, and I didn't know. I mean, Judge Dickinson has never had anything to do with this, never made a statement about that. I mean, Judge Dickinson has never had anything to do with this, never made a statement about that until October of two thousand and twenty, when all of this blew up and apparently he needed the clothes closet. Um, so he never made a comment about any of that until October of two thousand and twenty, and I have emails to show that.
Can we...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The implication that Judge Dickinson and them apparently was using the clothes closet as some part of the grant request, uh, does that imply that the county, uh, somehow the youth court had ownership of that? Could that be a problem?
It, it, it did imply that at least the county had contributed, uh, some in-kind services that were going to be used as part of this grant. But as I recall, my memory is not perfect, is that the money that he was talking about was money that Ms. Boardland actually spent herself to build shelving and stuff in the county property. Uh, I don't, I don't think that would be a problem because ultimately, if county took into debt the donations, then that became county property and has to be handled pursuant to the laws dealing with county property. And, and there is a specific statute, I'll take that back. There's a statute that has been used by the Office of Administrative Courts to say that the youth court can donate items. Uh, it's not clear to me. I disagree with it last time. I still not clear now, but that's what they've said, including this clothes closet. That does not change the inquiry as to who these items were donated to.
Right.
Um, I mean, ultimately, you know, looking at what's been sent here, I mean, she's, her position is those were donated to her individually. The reason I bring up this post in January two thousand and twenty, because it's obvious to me that in two thousand and twenty before this became any conflict or any contest, Ms. Boardland's statement in the public forum, or public as Facebook is, what her intent was and how she was receiving these, it's not only her intent, it's the people that read this, who are donating, are not saying, I'm donating to Harrison County. I'm donating to Ms. Boardland and she's doing this on her free time. I'm, I'm purely looking at whether or not there is, did this come into the possession, not possession, to the ownership of the county? If this post is true, then I don't think it did. And the folks that donated did not donate it to Harrison County. They donated it to Ms. Boardland. Therefore, it's her property. So if the board is desired, then the board can vote today, allow Ms. Boardland to recover her property. I would suggest you give a period of time here to have anybody allowed to contest that. And they would, you know, somebody that donated something may want to contest it. Somebody in the, the youth court may want to contest it. I just think the board ought to be able to hear the both sides of it before they actually turn it over, just to make sure we invented it properly.
Ms. Boardland, you're not aware of any other emails that are not here that would suggest otherwise?
No, sir.
Tell them how you understand, uh, the counselor's saying in reference to.
No, sir. All of those emails were sent strictly to the board members. Um, I got copies of them, but...
Yeah, there's no email out that would contradict what you said that would show that the county was involved in any way.
No, sir.
And if so, it can be sorted out, correct?
I don't know how you'd identify what if somebody says I donated to Harrison County, that came Harrison County property and we have to deal with it like it's county property here?
That's why I don't like sending an email.
What is it? A couple codes or something? Somebody might have done that.
There's a lot here and it's, it's unfortunately written, not written for old people to read very well.
There's a lot of...
That's all right. Not your fault. It's what I could read. I mean, I, that email hit me pretty strongly. What was in her mind, it's not just what's in her mind, it's what's in the minds of the folks that are donating. They're not donating. This, this post would say that they're donating to her individually, not to the county. I don't have any concerns that the county would be accused of having given away county property under these circumstances. I do think the board will give some opportunity to, for somebody to dispute that. If they don't dispute it, then we don't have an issue. This does not affect the youth courts. If the statute that the Office of Administrative Courts has cited allows the youth court to accept donations and to donate to people that are in the, that program.
But this is separate from that.
Yeah, that's right.
Don't get us confused on that. That's a totally separate issue.
Yeah, right. That's a separate issue. It doesn't have anything to do with what's there now.
Yeah.
What was there at the time that you took the donations? I don't know, new donations coming in and I don't...
And the fact that you've done this for years, how many years? Four, three, five, do you?
Um, I've collected clothing for, I don't even know, uh, as far back as I can remember. Cause I always find somebody who needed them. Um, but until July of two thousand and nineteen, up until that point, I just kind of collected here and there. And then I, it was tax-free weekend or whatever and people were saying they had this and that. I was like, just bring it to me. I can always find people who need it and it just, it got way bigger than I thought it would.
We, it's not, we don't make a decision at the moment, so I guess we need to determine a protocol in terms of getting any kind of rebuttal going forward?
I'm concerned.
One question I would like to ask, were, were there any other donations that went into that clothes closet that did not go through you?
No, everything's always been...
Were the donations through maybe the court or anyone else?
No, sir.
That one? All of it that's in there went through you?
Yes, sir. Because I always took it home and my son and I would sit on the floor for hours in the living room. We would sort it. We washed everything. So everything came to me. I took it home, washed, cleaned, separated, all of that.
Good.
So, uh, I guess we're not going to make a decision, so I guess what would be the protocol in terms of?
I mean, I'm ready to make a motion to give her back her property.
Next, I think I, I would be with Tim that we need to get a, see if there's any one of those.
I would, why don't we, the board is pretty supposed to move today and order the property to be returned. Let's set a date like after the first meeting in April. And if anybody, whether it be a member of the public or it be the youth court wants to come and insert some title to this or where we get into a conduct, if they don't show up, then she can pick it up.
Yeah. So we didn't, we didn't get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To allow, the motion would be allow Ms. Boardland to recover her property which was left in the clothes closet, which is the donated items.
Penning in our position?
Past of April, specific date?
Yes. I don't think anything's been put in there since, I think Pam, I think she did clothes right.
Would change the lines.
Yeah, so it's, everything that's there is, was donated to you.
Correct.
Now, there was shelving and stuff that was built in there. You all plan on removing that as it permanently installed. Your husband, I'm sorry.
He built all that.
That, so you also, you deserve recognition for being a husband.
Yeah, thank you.
You did the work on there. Yes, some of it, and you did it for your wife, not for Harrison County.
Of course.
It's for the children.
Yes, he did it for his wife, didn't he?
Good husband, same.
Good husband.
I'm sorry, what was your name? Troy Boardland. Okay, I'm just forgetting for the record. And you, you agree with your wife that this was, that it was donated to her? Hundred percent. We appreciate you.
It's a sad state of affairs that we have to punish someone who's done such a great job for our community. I just feel, feel upset about that. So let, I, personally, I can't speak for the entire board, but thank you.
If, if you need a place to store, I may have a place that I could put y'all use for a little while.
Well, I might take you up on that.
Give me a call. Once you get it.
And we can tackle that later. We'll do this first, but if she is a nonprofit, I don't see why there's any reason we can't rent her, our trailer, but that could be later. I mean, instead of shaking out the shelves, they've added to our facility.
And I have a twelve-year-old who put a lot of work into this. It's my right-hand man right here.
Stand up to Ms. Boardland.
Paying to stand up, sir. There you go. God bless you. Thank you.
So, um, the first meeting in April is, I don't know the date.
I hope it's not April.
Okay, it's Easter, Easter.
It's April.
All right, thank you all so much.
So, okay, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion's fair. Next, we have, uh, uh, item two, order taken off the table. Item one on March first, twenty twenty-one, meeting. Uh, continuing order, number two, considering glass paint with tiny Latin amount of three hundred and seven dollars. A motion?
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table.
Motion?
Second.
Second.
I'm in favor of saying aye. Number three, considering glass paint with tiny Latin amount of three-seven, three hundred and seven dollars. So we had this statement from our safety officer last week. This lady said she wanted to reiterate, did what, what was kind of laughing up. Miss County, you want to go on up? I think we also have, we also have, I think we also have two statements from, uh, security officers. Do y'all have those? Statements from security officers?
One came in before the deadline, one was after the deadline. So one came back up.
I just passed my email, statements from the security officers that witnessed the, uh, the incident.
And just before we get started, I want to make sure that y'all all know, um, I knew that it was on the agenda last week and I was in court. I emailed everyone just so we start by saying I knew that I had to be here and just didn't show up. I emailed to let you know where I was.
Okay. All right, uh.
Last is just broken. I'm working on it. Sorry.
So basically just parked the vehicle and then came back and you got robbed?
Yes, so on the nineteenth of January, um, drove up, uh, parked my vehicle. I did not leave for lunch that day because we had a jury coming in at one, so I didn't leave for lunch. Um, when I left at five o'clock, there was about a three-inch, I would say, a three-inch crack on the right, on the passenger side. And so the following day, I found this.
Crack was in the, uh, not the windshield, but the glass?
Windshield.
Oh.
The windshield.
Can I, can I ask you a few questions? The morning when you got, this was a very noticeable crack. It's not something you wouldn't have noticed when you arrived that morning.
Yes. Was it just a ding? Like when, you know, like, you know, immediately if something happened, you sort of go to Safelight or somewhere and get it taken care of. This was a streak, a crack.
And so I believe you spoke to the security guard who had witnessed the law maintenance people blowing towards the vehicles, which are not supposed to do.
Correct.
And so when you went out and looked, the crack was a three-inch crack?
I would say it was about a three-inch crack.
Wasn't there?
I mean, I didn't go check immediately to see if anything was, you know, I didn't think anything was wrong or suspect that anything would be. I just, when I left at five, I saw it.
So when you got in your car, before the car was ever moved, you saw the crack? It wasn't there when you got that morning?
Correct. And I did not leave for lunch because we had a jury coming in at one.
And I think the law states only negligence is proven should we be liable, correct? And we were taught to blow away from cars, but we know that we were blown toward them. Is that right?
The problem before was there was no testimony about how the crack got there. Here, now I have testimony, live testimony that the crack got there when she arrived, the car never moved. The crack was there at five o'clock. The only thing that happened in between when the gentleman was blowing the rocks off towards the vehicles as opposed to away from the vehicles. If this board finds that sufficient, that would be negligence if the board finds that, can I adjudicate that? To leave the cause of the fracture or windshield, I think it's probably, before we just didn't have a meeting.
Yeah.
I was concerned about, I think the board can adjudicate that, being a claim which could be...
That being considered, I'll make the motion?
Motion to?
To approve.
Can I second?
Second.
Okay. Any type of discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Ms. Julius, who wanted to come up and, uh, talk with us? Thank y'all.
Good morning and I thank you for allowing me, um, such a, while I talked to Supervisor Morton, she's allowing it through you and to your Monday morning. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity. Um, just a quick note and just a quick reminder to my board of supervisors and Harrison County family and citizens who might be watching this morning and who else, whoever's watching for the state of our meeting on YouTube. But on March twenty-ninth is the observance of National Vietnam Day. So we need to be aware of that and anytime you see one of them, please take the opportunity to, um, thank them. Um, it's, it is an opportunity and they are a part of history and we all know how they were treated when they came home. And, um, you would be amazed on how many of our Vietnam veterans have not been told thank you. And, um, it is quite emotional. Uh, we had a penning last week of a CB who had came in and I realized that he had not been recognized for his service and sacrifice. And, um, we took part in a, the, the penning ceremony. Um, that penning ceremony actually came about back in two thousand and twelve. And, um, I was not a part of that and aware of that until sometime probably about two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. And, um, during that time, we were at, I was at an event and I was, of course, talking about Harrison County and, um, Kisa Air Force Base, CB Base, and right there in the middle of it, the, um, National, um, the Army Reserves there in Gulfport. Um, and during that time, talking about my dad, Vietnam veteran, three tours of duty and, um, the service to his country. When I had a Vietnam veteran who actually came up to me and presented me with his pen. His pen, it's only meant for Vietnam veterans and their surviving spouses. It's not meant for children. And I was given this pen by this Vietnam veteran, um, because he, in memory of my dad and the Vietnam veterans that I would continue to serve until I shut my two eyes. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, um, I'm at the Armed Forces Retirement Home servicing our veterans on the fourth Thursday of the month. It's a beautiful year, two thousand and nineteen, wasn't it?
Before twenty.
And during that, during that time, servicing those Vietnam veterans who have never known that they had benefits through the VA to be able to, um, recognize them, um, their compensation to be, have them awarded for their service-connected disabilities. And, um, we got one veteran, I had him up to sixty percent. And every, every, every month, he'd put his name on the list just to come in there and tell me hello and tell me thank you so very much and, um, how much he appreciated me. And as time went on in two thousand and nineteen and everyone, he'd come in there, he had a cough. Just a dry cough. And I said, sir, you know, you really need to go and have that checked. It's important that you have that checked. And the following month, he came in and he brought me back his pen that we actually had pinned him. And probably about two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we had a penning ceremony there at the Armed Forces Retirement Home and we pinned him. But he brought his pen back to me and, um, I had actually had told them the story of a Vietnam veteran at this event that had given me this pen. And he wanted to give it back to me and he wanted me to share it with a child of another Vietnam veteran. He made me promise that I would do so. That time I'm making that promise, I didn't realize what I was really and truly making the promise for. Um, following month, I got a call and he, he had already went to the doctor. I, I know he was already given the news and he'd asked me, um, if I would take time out and come up there and see him. And during that time, my only regret at that point in time is there was a meeting at the VA and, um, I didn't make that, I couldn't go see him. Two days later, he passed. That was two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and twenty, this was supposed to happen last year. And of course, I won't say the C-word. We all know what it is, happened. And, um, so I had been riddled with guilt knowing I've had this promise to give to this, this Vietnam veteran that I made. I made him a promise that I would share a pen with a child of a Vietnam veteran. And, um, and I'm here to, today to keep that promise. Um, this person is a surviving child of a Vietnam veteran. Her, she lost her father to a service-connected disability. And she's actually been one of my biggest, biggest supporters in my office. She's... she's followed me off to conferences. She's listened to me complain about VA. She's let me call and say I've had problems, like for tomorrow, I'll be traveling over to Jackson County in order to talk to the coroner's office there for them to amend the death certificate for a Vietnam veteran in order for that spouse to receive their benefit. And Pam, I couldn't think of anybody else that I would want to recognize, but you and the memory of your dad. And this part is the veteran's name that wanted me to share, so I can't pin you, but it's an honor to pass it on. And I thank you for everything that you've been doing.
Thank you, I think you do outstanding job, everybody in the county is voted up, thank you so much.
Absolutely. And if you don't believe she goes above and beyond, my husband is a Vietnam veteran and he wouldn't come here to be paid. He did, I'm not going up there and all of people, uh, so one day when we had a family gathering, she came to the house and she pinned it in front of all of his family, so she goes above and beyond.
She should, uh, thank you so much again.
Thank you, Pam, yes, it's your name.
Yeah, I got it. Uh, moving along, before we go into the contingent, I want to go ahead and do an add-on by the end of the first one we have is order authorized issues of check. Not to exceed sixty thousand dollars in certain kind of melodic solutions, can't pay the pharmacy to invoice for melodic change to perks, name redemption, maturity notices for first and second district. Said amount is to be reimbursed to the county through the name redemption process. Motion.
Motion.
Second discussion, and it's only forty-seven thousand.
Yes.
It has to invite invoice.
Forty-seven thousand one hundred.
Yes, she got it.
No, I'm all.
Forty-six thousand thirty-five dollars.
You need to add to the record.
Well, it says not to exceed.
Okay, not to invoice.
But we can add.
Okay, not to exceed.
That was before I had the invoice.
Yeah, before we had the invoice.
Yes, so we can add that to the record.
Yeah, we can add to the record.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Item two thirty, the gentleman is ordered to declare partial recreation assets twenty-nine, six, seven, and surplus for use at trade. And authorize the inventory pledge to move from inventory.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Item three, order authorized estate contract number eighteen zero 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 three six six five four purchase. From, from retracted company for one new Kubota L four seven zero one eight S T tractor loader with amount of twenty-two thousand two five three fourteen, including trade and P double O, and authorize a budget amendment. Budget amendment to zero zero one five two zero nine one six, motion.
Motion.
Second, discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Last, add-on, the gentleman is order accepting selection committee, county administrator, purchase plate, EMA, director, and board attorney. Recommendation, RFP for emergency running assistance around administration and case management, open doors, homeless coalition. And authorize the board president to execute agreement upon receipt after review, board attorney. Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion. I just got this this morning, so. Is it gonna be the homeless coalition, everybody knows it come out, is there more about it?
This is the money, this is the money that we've already received on the grant, uh, for renters assistance, for rental and utilities.
Okay.
So they will administrate that part on that process of that.
Like we have the last, is Gulfport and Biloxi still part of that?
No, that's home, that's the home grant.
Okay.
That's a different thing, this will be serving all the renters and tenants, it'll, it's gonna fit the renters and tenants. People are COVID, it's COVID related, that lost their jobs or had a change in income and, and they're behind in their rent.
Do you know if that rent will go directly to the, the lease or, or will it go directly to the rental?
That's what we, since we, um, hiring, that's, these people, then we have to come up with a policy and procedure, so we'll come back with those policies and procedures. The next meeting, um, as far as that, how we're gonna, how we're gonna to, um, distribute it.
Cause we have some lease, lease ors, or the renters, that, I mean, the people that are renting the homes.
They're gonna have to have information.
They're having a real rough, rough time.
Yeah, they're gonna have information from the tenants and the lease ors. So, individuals, so they'll be both. And it cannot go up to, they can really actually receive up to, um, twelve months of rent, so if they're, if they're still out of work and all, so.
I know when I'm making the decision now, that I'd highly recommend it going straight to the land, uh, to the landlords. And that's how homeless coalition has already, always done it, and the people that had trouble, homeless coalition would send with my company the check immediately, cause you don't want it to get spent on other things. So, I think that's very important.
Can you run into the problem of them spending money not for that?
Yeah, that's why I was concerned. Thank you, and we'll make up those policies at a later date. I assume somebody's already got them, we just kind of talk to them.
Yeah, homeless coalition. And they may already have the current list that they can, to talk to. They'll be able to, get the ball, get the room, run it up there.
Thank you, thank you Pam.
Okay, any further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Next, we have the, next we have the consent agenda, uh, item, item number four three nine has been placed on the consent agenda, same thing as the routine now controversial matters, from which our supervisor, like, I took great.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose. Item ten, order straight twenty minutes, personnel change with the tax accessory. Office is listed in on file for federal clerk and personnel department. Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I have had it. On eleven, order, not to receive of an approving petition for decreases to the twenty-twenty real property role as recommended by tax accessory, motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I carry it. Item twelve, audit, indicating the employment of Tennessee Holloman and Boris Holloman and Associates to represent Elmer Tamit, Elmer Tamit Fleury in his capacity as Harrison County Tax Accessory and Paula Latin, her capacity as an employee of Harrison County Tax Accessory's office. In litigation matter listed in the order.
Motion.
Second.
Second discussion, was, is this prior to, um, Tau?
It's both. He asserts that.
But Tau was at least same, he was, he was employed then.
Tau was.
He was employed at that time.
He's alleging Tau in his official capacity. It's not a very big claim, we'll probably promptly dismiss against Tau because he basically claims that he didn't stop Paula from firing him, but Paula didn't fire him until after Paula was took office, but the letter was sent out before she took office. It claims that was under Tau's.
Can we represent private individuals?
No, no, he's suing his official capacity. For can employee council represent, and I do recommend that.
But he wasn't, the gentleman wasn't fired until after Tau retired.
But he alleges that while Tau was still tax accessory, that the letter was sent to him while she was employed by Tau, that's the only claim against Tau.
Oh.
He didn't, he alleged that Tau did anything else other than the letter was sent out on January third, terminated him effective January sixth, when she took office. It's not a, valid claim, but it's while he was tax accessory.
Okay, I don't think he had anything to do with it, but that's okay.
He didn't, he still didn't, the letter was just sent out while he was still paying. Not, that's a problem, but that was funny. I don't know why that was done that way, that's okay.
Okay.
Don't think much of the lawsuit either.
Any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Item thirteen, on the county engineer, in order approved in the final plaque for Riverbend subdivision phase one, located in section fifteen, township seven south, range twelve west. Supervising Board of District three, per district district gets recommended by general attorney, P. Harrison County, beginning and authorized board president to execute same. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Item fourteen, order straight twenty minutes, the recovery form, small business for separate storm sewer system. MS four, general permit and authorizations, seeking to change what current permit is submitted to the Mississippi Department of Environment and Quality, officer pollution control, as recommended by general attorney, P. Harrison County Engineer, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Item fifteen, five services, order approved travel for two five-service recruits, Brandon Clark and Chancey Lundey to attend the state five academies for the final testing and skills testing in rural Mississippi on March twenty-three and twenty-four. With the use of the county vehicle, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. I oppose, motion carries. Item sixteen, under the youth court order approved lease agreement between Florence Guard LLC and Harrison County for the youth court's visitation standard. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
We're discussing, this could, just so you know.
Second discussion.
The lease that the tax provides is not the lease we have revised. Uh, that's the original lease they sent, we have revised it. Uh, taken out things that I thought were objectionable. And they tentatively approved it, I would, the board can go ahead and authorize it if it's, if it deems inappropriate. And then we can submit.
Didn't change the price on it, did it?
They didn't change the price, it was only one dollar plus, now, only thing so the board knows, they've asked for us to pay taxes and insurance. I did discuss with the tax accessories office whether or not the county would be exempt from that, and they believed we would not be.
Under that lease, where, if we lease property, where that property is not exempt from taxes?
There's an argument to be made that you are, the, the landowner is still paying the taxes, so you're really not exempting the property. They would still pay the taxes.
Landowner.
Where reimbursement then was part of the rental, the cost of the taxes and utilities.
Well, I do remember Tim went down and leased the property when I was superintendent and at least did, we did pay the amount and the lease for the taxes.
Right, and so I, I think, you know, I, I could probably make an argument that it's, that you could say it's exempt, but the problem with that is landowners, when they lease property to the county, you know, they wouldn't be paying taxes on their property still. And that might not be a good thing, so, uh, the successor says they don't believe I'm correct, but it's not very much money, so I wouldn't want to spend a lot of time arguing about it quite frankly.
Do we have any idea how much the electricity bill and the, um, how much it would be?
We do not.
The reason I ask that is the.
How do you know?
Our region.
I think the average from previous, um, people that ran out that space was around, total for the whole twenty-five thousand square foot facility was it was under twenty thousand annually, so twenty fifteen, eighteen roughly, I believe, um.
A month?
A year, a year.
A year, okay.
A year, yes.
Twenty thousand dollars a year?
It was under that to maintain it, to pay utilities for the.
I wouldn't say there'd be use in the whole building.
That's why I fixed it ahead. Twenty-five thousand square feet of.
So it's got the, the playground that's already there, butts up back to about a yard, and it's got this an old theater that's part of that facility as well, I'm not sure it is the production place, and it's got a, a gym that's kind of attached, that's the bulk of the property. The other parts are classrooms that will be used as a visitation.
Like a skate park, Marlon. Maybe how much we paid for that.
This question I'm asking, if we could push under shut, we had to pay eighteen thousand dollars a year on, uh, for the taxes for such a use of a small area, it doesn't make sense, could we find, could, could you find, if we had to pay those taxes, why? Could you find a smaller place rather than having such a large facility, but for for what you don't need?
Well, we would be utilizing all of it.
Oh, yeah?
We would be finding ways to utilize all of it.
Finding ways.
Um, we have, you know, kind of gone three down because it is a large space, um, the indoor office spaces over there as well, um, but in locating property, even the one that was adjacent that we originally requested on Mount Roy right here, by the detention center in youth court, it was close to thirty thousand for thirteen hundred square feet, the rental, so, um, we're getting like, Mr. Holloman said, I think a dollar rental price, and then we just maintain it and then pay utilities on it.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about in the lease, I mean, it says, you'd be in, you know, improvements, improving the building?
We took that out.
It's been a debt, okay, we took that out. It's the old Westminster School, right, Valerie?
Yes.
So, how long's it been sitting dead, five, six years?
No, there's been a group in there leasing out.
Okay.
Um, a ministry, Wells Ministry, has been in there operating, using at least half of the building. Um, so they remodeled half of it already that would be ready to move in and utilize today, yeah.
My only concern.
I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I was just gonna say, I had no real issue, cause it was a dollar a year lease. But now, all of a sudden, it's becoming to be an eighteen, sixteen, whatever the taxes are, lease for such a large facility.
Utilities. Could we use just part of it, maybe, cause twenty-five, twenty-five thousand.
Any way to lease part of it, because twenty-five thousand square feet, that's pretty pretty large facility, if I'm not mistaken.
Good times.
I would be in favor of it if they paid the utility bill, and the only reason I bring the utility bill up is we have a skate park and our utility bill is huge. And we've had renters that leased it and, oh, yeah, they're gonna lease it and everything, but when they get their first bill, they're devastated, they can't make ends meet. So that would be my big concern, is to know the actual, actually, how much is that?
They provided, I think, a year's, originally, um, they provided a year's worth of bills for each utility that we would be paying and what that looked like for the Wells Ministry that was operating for the past year, so I think that was submitted with the original lease agreement, I'll have to go back and look. Um, and I can provide that to you all, I'm gonna email it.
About existing county buildings, I don't look at existing county.
Well, we have, again, I'm sorry to always be the bummer on this topic, but we do, do we really want to take the liability? Do we really want the taxpayers to take the liability that if something happens from a man visiting his child and something happens to another child, do we really want to take, I don't? They told us that Harrison, that Hancock County does exactly what we're suggesting. Hancock County does not do what we are suggesting. Hancock County has a nonprofit, forget the name of it.
Brenda's House, I think.
Thank you, Brenda's House, they're nonprofit, and then the county subsidizes them for the good work they do. I'm not gonna let my tax, my people be on the, on the line, like, uh, be liable for some tragedy that happens there, I, I'm totally opposed to it. We fund a nonprofit, perhaps the people who are already there, Valerie? They want to take on that and y'all take that on? Youth Court and them, go for it, but I'm not gonna vote for that for my people, no way. Let's move to table this until we find out more information. Okay. I moved to table.
Second.
Second.
Is there anything I can provide that you all need from me to?
The utility bills, huh?
Utility.
Yes, ma'am, and, um.
We gotta find out the taxes.
And the taxes. We need to know how much exactly it's gonna cost the taxpayer to do it. Okay, there's anything, if there are any improvements that you want to do, make sure you add that in there too, just so we know what we're giving, okay? Thank you. Thank you.
So we had to move to table, we had the motion second, all in favor, say aye. Okay, I want to do one thing, if I get the board, don't mind, let me. It's a last item, but you don't want me to screw it in there anymore, I know she needs to probably get on the board, she's.
Yeah. Did she walk, did she walk?
Yes, just walked out, who, what number is that?
Sixty-three.
It's sixty-eight.
Fifty-eight. She, I'm sure, she's the one that get on the road, she's the one that waited on it. Anything I can, anything I can answer? Okay, yes, okay, I'm gonna go to, uh, item sixty-three, and this, uh, discussed using basic life support related to amelances. So, you want to kind of give us a?
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of background on that, we're requesting the BLS amelances, the main reason is because right now there's a, uh, national shortage of paramedics. And currently. And currently the, the paramedic program at the local college, Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College, uh, in Gulfport, has extended the program for a two-year, to a two-year program. We haven't had a paramedic come out of that class since two thousand and nineteen. Um, I understand that they have changed it, uh, this last year in nineteen, in two thousand and twenty, in August, they, they switched it to an eighteen-month program. So we're still, we're not getting any paramedics out of that program.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was a EMT.
Yes.
And it did take me about eight months.
See some articles.
Eight weeks, I think.
See some articles.
Six months, eight weeks, whatever. But, um, we didn't do quite as much as y'all did then. But can we, is there another school? Is there another alternative besides the junior college that we can use for licensing?
There, there is. Actually, we have a university, uh, South Alabama, uh, is another program. Jones, up in Jones County, they have a college, uh, permanent program at that college as well. And then we do recruit pretty heavily from those two colleges.
And they're not that long?
They're, I know that the one at USA is a one-year program. It's a little bit more expensive just because it's, it is at the university, so it is a little bit more expensive.
Uh-huh.
What we're looking at doing is, uh, is sponsoring advanced scholarships for a couple of our, um, EMTs or advanced EMTs to attend the program.
Okay, and your EMT class is six months maybe? Are there any alternatives for that?
Actually, we have the, the EMT, the Earn to Learn program that we started February first, and that is about a three-month program.
Okay.
They should, at the end of this month, uh, they should be starting their clinical rides. And, uh, once we get those, we'll have, uh, you know, branded EMTs, which would help with, you know, staffing to beat all those trucks. Now, BLS trucks are gonna be used specifically for transfers, interfacility transfers. You're not gonna be part of the nine-one-one system at all. They're just strictly for the transfers out of hospitals, nursing home transfers, the dialysis transfers. We have quite a few repetitive patients and the, so that's what they're gonna be used for. We're not gonna take away any of the ALS units, ALS units that we have on the road. This is just gonna supplement, uh, the, the system, basically to prevent the ALS units, the paramedics, from letting these dialysis transfers, you know, back to the nursing home transfers. And that way we keep the paramedic units in the nine-one-one system to prevent the nine-one-one calls.
Basically what you're saying, talking about ALS, we don't, I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But what you're asking for is approval to, to incorporate in the contract, the right to use, uh, or the ability to use another type of vehicle.
A non, a non-nine-one-one.
Non, non.
Non-emergency vehicle.
Yeah, it's a basic life support. The BLS is basic life support, ALS, I'm sorry, it's advanced life support.
Does that meet criteria that, uh, I know, uh, Rebecca just indicated some liability issues that we, are we placed in any liability issues or was covered with that? When we're, we're not using, when you're using a certain vehicle that's not your, what I, I think you were saying the ambulance.
Right, right.
Whatever that.
The ALS, the advanced life support.
Yeah.
There, there shouldn't be any, because most of these, uh, patients have already been medically cleared. Um, like the transfers out of the hospital, the nursing home, they've already had a medical evaluation by the emergency physician, uh, they're being discharged back to the facility.
There is a E and T, EMT in that vehicle, wasn't?
With, there's, yes, there's, actually, there'd be two, there'd be two EMTs in that.
And, and basic, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming basic life support such as oxygen and that's.
Yeah, they'll still have, they won't have any medications except for the oxygen. And they do, they will have an AED or a LifePak fifteen that's locked down, so they can't use it, you know, to its full capabilities, but, uh, they, they will still have capabilities of performing some, you know, life-saving interventions if they, at the, within their scope of practice.
Is this approved by some, your, uh, some sort of organization that you operate under or do you?
Um, it's, it's approved by the state through VMS, the Bureau of VMS, the state level. It's, it's in the rules and regulations.
Don't you have a physician as well?
I'm sorry?
Don't you have a physician?
Yes, our medical director, Dr. Andrew Nakamoto. Yes.
So they have, uh, safeguards?
Yeah.
That's all I, I'll make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but again, this is not, we're not taking any, any of the, the, the advanced life support ambulance out of the system. We're just gonna add the basic life support for the transfers. Uh, one reason is because our, our, the interfacility transfers, I think, maybe because of COVID, I'm, I'm not real sure what the whole reason is, but we have a lot more interfacility transfers, um, out of facilities nowadays where before we're running about twenty, twenty-five percent, we're up to about thirty-six to forty percent of our transport volume daily is interfacility transfers.
I'm certainly in favor of it. I think it's a way to use full, fully-equipped ambulances to transfer, you know, psych patients. But Supervisor Martin didn't know that this would be pushed up on the agenda and she just got word to me through her officer that maybe if we could maybe table this because Chief Boni apparently wants to weigh in on this subject. I, I'm just the messenger, Renee.
He's walking over.
He's over there.
Okay.
Okay. I don't think Pat's here as well, but that's all.
Pat?
Pat, do you have anything on Mr. Dune? In about one follow-up?
Um, I, I can say, I mean, if you want to table it till she gets here, is that the?
Um, can you talk while Boni walks over?
Yeah, fill her in. How do you feel about it?
I'm sorry, your opinion. Do you have an opinion to take this?
Okay, so I think to make this real simple, um, what we're trying to do, what they're trying to do is keep the ALS units, the paramedic on nine-one-one calls, if you will. Just gonna say nine-one-one call, emergency calls. Be quite frank with you, he knows it, I know it, everybody that's in the business know we're having problems with response times. We're trying to address those response times. If we don't address those response times, meaning it's taking longer for a ambulance with a paramedic to get there, then we got a real problem. What this does is like the old days when Connie and I were back on the trucks.
We worked together.
We used to, uh, we had the, uh, a, a transfer truck. That's what it was called. It was a transfer truck. You went on that truck and you did transfers all day. What's a transfer? Transfer is mama needs to get home from the hospital, but I can't put her in the car. I gotta call an ambulance. She doesn't need a paramedic. She doesn't need anything other than a transport laying down.
Mama needs to go to the emerg, to the nursing home, but I don't want to take her.
But the EMT, isn't it one for us?
The EMT, here's how this works. You got your basic EMT who can do certain things, then you have your advanced EMT, that's another level up, who can do more than that person can, and then you've got the paramedic. And so the basic EMT can do all the life-saving stuff that needs to be done on these kind of calls. Now, if that person, let's say that person in the back of that ambulance is being transferred from the hospital to a, to a, to a nursing home or something, let's say they stop breathing. Let's say they, they expire, if you will. That EMT is trained to do everything that needs to be done in the back of that ambulance, just like a paramedic. Can he push the same drugs? No. All they do then is they turn lights off, get to the nearest facility, but it's no different than the, uh, transfer van that they use, the med van. There's a system there that they, um.
Right.
That they're transporting, they're taking patients to, to hospital, I mean, to doctors' visits. That's an EMT most of the time, isn't it? Or is that a?
That's just the, they're just drivers.
Okay, so it's just another level of that. I can, our point is that we've got to make sure that we keep the paramedic responding to the calls that the paramedic needs to respond to. And, and by transferring, having granny or mama transferred by a paramedic who she doesn't need and takes him off the street and, and the response times are longer, it causes us real problems. Until we can get the paramedic levels up to where we need to do, this is a stopgap measure that they're trying to do to make this thing happen. So I, I can live with this. It's not ideal, it's not the perfect thing. We'd like, but remember this, I think our ordinance was that this had, that this county was an ALS county, correct?
Correct.
Meaning every ambulance had to have a paramedic on it. And that's why they're having to come back to you to change that part of the, uh, of the ordinance.
You added basic life support to advanced life support. You didn't have basic life support in the current ordinance.
The only thing we didn't have, the only thing we haven't got in, in our ordinance is basic. And we have everything else. We have advanced and we have a paramedic, but we do not have the bottom level, which is basically transfers from the hospital to the nursing home, nursing home, home, baby can get those.
Is your fee reflected in that?
I'm sorry?
That is, is the fee you charge the people for that transfer, is it reflected?
Yes, yes.
You charge them less.
Be a BLS rate, which would be a less.
That's right.
Can I say this and I, and I'm not the, James probably needs to, here's the trickle-down effect of this. Um, what happens is if the hospital has a dozen people that they need to move, they can't move them till AMR moves them, those beds in the hospital are now occupied and it causes a backup, even bigger backup, because they can't get trucks to.
It expedites the movement.
It, it helps reduce the backlog there that means, because, listen, I'm giving them patients every day, all the time, all, every hour, I'm, I'm out in the field, we're treating them, we're sending them to the hospital. They get to the hospital and if it gets bottlenecked at the hospital, there's been times when that ambulance has been tied up because they couldn't get the patient off the stretcher and couldn't get back in the field to meet for.
Hours.
Yeah.
I didn't want to give a number, but for long enough that it causes me back, backup on.
Change, you know, I don't think it's changing.
On us in the, in the field. So that's one of the reasons. We're looking at, we're looking at everything that we can as a team to try to figure out what we could do to make sure that ambulance gets there to the person that needs it quicker.
Just enhance the system. What we're trying to do is get the right patient with the right mobile. Right.
And there are situations, if you have an emergency case and they have, they're full and the, all the emergency rooms are filled, which does happen from time to time, then your, your granny and your, uh, ambulance is tied up.
Yep.
And your crew.
Yep. Time for me to tie.
Okay, we have one, we have Chief is here.
Chief? Uh, how you doing? I just wanted to, uh, say a little bit too. I, I, we have a little bit of concern and it's not with AMR, with James, that with the people that work, that we work with, we, we have a great relationship with them. We have a great relationship with, uh, with their people and, and what they're trying to do here with this change. I have no issue with, I know, uh, we have to do something to, to change the, the times that we're getting out there in the field. So, uh, I, I do not have an issue with that. The only issue I do have with is that there, there needs to be some kind of guarantee that, that these units are not gonna be used as, as, as emergency response units. And, and that's the only thing that we're really asking is to find some type of a guarantee.
Oh, really?
Well, if they were to use those type of, I, I thought there would be some sort of criteria and regulations on, on that, on ambulance services that they couldn't, that they have to meet certain criteria to pass for.
It's in our ordinance.
Yeah.
Someone that is in need of an ambulance. And those, if you're saying that you want to guarantee that they don't use it for regular, I'm out there laying out on the road from a wreck and they come in that little vehicle and that's not a, a certified ambulance, then would they not be in trouble for something like that?
Mister?
Well, it's, the way it's written in the ordinance is where they're, they're not gonna be used as part of the nine-one-one system. Now that the state of Mississippi does regulate that BLS units can respond to nine-one-one calls, but we're not gonna do that. That's the way they're.
The contract, the current contract.
We need to make sure that that contract states, that revision in that contract states that, that you cannot use. That's what you're concerned about.
If I may, if I may, our ordinance says that too. So all they're doing is amending one part of the ordinance that says that they can use basic for transfers.
But I think what.
So that's, that's your guarantee.
Non-emergence.
Non-emergencies. And that's your guarantee. We have an ordinance and a contract.
Just make sure that the contract addresses.
Let me, let me add one thing to that. And I, I reworded it, went with them, we went back and forth and looking at it because I had some problems with the way it was originally. And when I think at the end, what you've got on there, it says they cannot do that, they cannot put them in the system unless the jurisdiction have an authority, Joe, myself, the sheriff, whoever, says I need more ambulances and I need them now. I've got a bus on a train track that's been hit, I need everything you've got. They come. We don't care what they are, they come and then we'll figure it out. We'll put our paramedics on it and all that. So in, in essence, theoretically, that's even putting us more trucks out there that if an emergency, huge emergency happens, we'll call them in. But I can tell you this, we have his cell number and I call him daily about things that I'm not happy with or I question, and we have the ability to do that. I think right now that works for, because we're saying this isn't, this isn't good or this needs to be changed. So I think with the contract that we have and us staying on it, with you guys saying, yes, chief, question it if you need to question it, and we have to, because at the end of the day, where this all goes to, and this is the God alms truth, at the end of the day, they're gonna be coming back to you and saying, we want the contract for this service, we want to continue that contract. And then we'll have a discussion and see if they met.
Met.
Met our criteria, yes, sir. And at some point, they're gonna have to either say, yes, we did this, or no, we didn't. And then that, then that's gonna fall on them. So I think right now we hold that, that card, if you will, to, to do that. But just like, uh, Chief Boni said, um, we gotta do something. It's not working what we're doing now, so.
We agree. We, we agree. And, you know, now, well, one of these times, well, that BLS truck on the way to the hospital to pick up grandma, run across an accident, uh, as often as we're on the road, yeah, they're probably gonna come across something once in a while. They are expected to stop and render care and request the ALS unit. But that will not, that BLS unit will not stop the clock on that, you know, with our response times. That BLS unit will not count stopping the clock at that point.
My husband just got me quick doing that.
So, but yeah, we, we appreciate, we appreciate the consideration.
It's a matter.
The sooner that we can enact this, you know, the, I think the better things will be. I know, I think just for discussion today, uh, and if there's any way we can change that, that'd be fantastic.
I think they need it right away.
Y'all look at the contract, everybody's sitting up, everybody has had enough creativity.
Yes, sir, when, uh, when they sent that out, I, I called each fire chief and, and explained the situation, talked to all the, uh, fire chief, and then I sent out the, uh, the, the wording, the sheet for it so that they could weigh on it, weigh in on it. And so what you should have, I think, um, is what we, is what we, um, and said, yes, we're in agreement with this.
Why don't we pass it today as, and then they can have them review it one more time?[1603.84] Why don't we pass it today, as, and then they can have them review it one more time?
I don't think you have it before you to pass, unfortunately, when this came in, I asked, is this going to be passed, because I realized we have to do something with the ordinance. There's conflicting things, the resolution that was provided, amending the ordinance was not sufficient, there was an email sent that had suggested changes in it, that probably would be sufficient, but it hadn't been drafted. And so when it came in, I asked, is this for discussion, or are we going to be adopting this? Because I realized we'd have to do something, I told it for discussion, so we didn't draft anything.
You can have it drafted.
So you have to have, you have to have a first reading of this.
That's right, we don't have an ordinance on the agenda to be.
It's not the force.
The problem, we're going to have a third meeting this month, we might get it done for that.
I think, I think that is the plan, to try to have a third one.
And have a third one, or at least to bring this up, because it's an emergency situation.
But I think we need to, because I think we need to.
We probably can't.
Mass it up to the board. Yeah, we've got some plans, so we need to set it there.
So I think where we are is get the ordinance before it's down.
You need two readings on the ordinance.
Well, they, they want us to research whether or not it's an emergency, is what I was told this morning, and hopefully Hancock County said it was an emergency change. I had looked at that to see if it was legal, it's the first time I heard that, but this morning, so. We have to do what the law says, to, you're amending an ordinance, which is a little bit different than adopting a new ordinance, so. I just have to look at it, it's just not.
Sure, I completely understand, I.
Somebody had said something before the meeting, I'd have done it over the weekend.
I said it before.
Okay, well.
I agree with Tim, you need to see, you need to see it before.
But, but let's do it.
We brought this up in discussion, so basically what we're doing is, is if you have a third meeting, Timmy can have a chance to look at it, to do any kind of changes. If we have a third meeting, then we can, we can take it a minute, if not, we'll take it at the first meeting in April.
They've got it drafted in an email, what they won't change, it shouldn't be hard to put it in an ordinance, and the question is, how, how fast can we adopt that? But I'll look at that in the meantime, because there's a way to do it in an emergency. I was told Hancock did it under the pandemic emergency.
Right.
And we can't do it, we can't do it pending your approval?
You only have it drafted before you hit the consent.
Yeah.
No, ordinance are different than, than just taking action.
Then they can read it and say.
Look, and look, since I can't call you mister, I'll just.
Let's pass it.
Yeah, we'll read it later.
I appreciate it.
They go to hell, but.
No, it's, it's in our back.
Send it to me, that may shorten, shorten it up.
Okay, I'll email here.
You can, Gary, I'll email, but I may not remember where you emailed.
I just think it is urgent for them to not have their.
We'll get it done.
We can get to a quick one with the third. Hancock used, the verbiage that Pat and I worked on is what Hancock used. They took what, what we were going to use over here, and used over there, and they passed theirs last Monday, so I'll get here and send you, it should be exactly the same word.
It's what's in the email. That you sent, right?
Excuse me?
So what's in the email that you sent, Ms. Morris?
Yes, sir, yes.
That would be fine, if we had drafted it, I would have done it if, if I thought it was just for discussion.
So we, so we have it, we just don't have it drafted in a ordinance form, right?
Right, and we didn't notice it as a change in the ordinance.
Okay, we'll, we'll, on the, before the end of day, we'll pass that at that third meeting, if possible. We'll go back to number 17 with background. You say, order proven local port perky for the welding machine. Number MIG 2001, for the ride, certified LSC in amount of $6,906,35. And authorized the line item number 001, 5226412001522922, motion.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
Do we need a weld?
Yeah, so we ended up, we paid a few thousand dollars last year just renting local welders and other guys, Timmy maybe spoke to, that we can definitely use it countywide.
Yeah, Willie, Willie could use it as well.
Mm-hmm. Oh, Willie said that to me, yeah. And it's coming from Ring's budget, by the way, so.
All right. Willie didn't tell me that, he told someone that, discussed this with me, that he could use it. In further discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried. Item 18 zoning.
Yes, sir. So items number 18 through 21 are standard cases before the planning commission. I ask that you concur with the recommendations from the planning commission for those. Item 22, I'd like to do separately.
Okay, item 18 through 21, concur with the joint administrative, zoning commission. All right, motion.
Motion. Second.
In further discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carried.
We did that out in your district, that effect? We just seconded all the stuff.
If I'm not killing here.
Item 22 is our proven existing planning commission field procedure, and zoning office, he's capable of it.
Right, so it's two documents, the zoning ordinance has a clause that says that the board has to authorize the fees that we charge, and so these are the fees that we've been charging for years, but I have not been able to find where the board has ever, when we originally set the fees, it was done here, but I can't find that document. So I'd like to post the fees that we charge for different things in the zoning board, in the zoning office. And then the other one is the same appeal format that we've always been using, and.
But you changed time, the number of days in the appeal process.
15. 15 is always.
No, I'm talking about, what was, I don't know what, there's something about the number of days, from 30 days to 60 days, 90 days, I don't.
Ordinance currently, currently states that the hearing must be held within 90 days for the decision is affirmed, in other words, the planning commission, whatever decision is required, unless the board actually directly had an appeal that was reversed, because it was like 94 days before it came before the board, this board has to take action within 90 days. And the action can be a continuance, so what's going to happen? If it's not coming up within 90 days, the planning is going to have to ask to continue it outside of the 90 days. So all it, all it requires the board to take action within 90 days, so a continuance, you're going to take actual record, court reversed it because it was 94 days.
Extra focused on that in the future.
94, 97, something like that, and there was a legitimate excuse for that. There was somebody that was.
And all the parties agreed to it.
Everybody agreed to it, the problem was that the board took no action. The court held in that case that the board had to take action, even if it was to continue the case within 90 days, that's what the ordinance said, first of all, it hasn't ever been raised. They also reversed it on what denied this issue about 10 minutes per person. The board has always said, you've got a maximum of 30 minutes per side. In that case, one speaker went 30 minutes, so the board did not allow the other two to speak. And the court said, no, your policy says 10 minutes per person. The fact that you allowed one person to take more than 10 minutes doesn't affect the other two people's right to speak for their 10 minutes, so. The board started a.
And that appeal is coming back next month.
That's the case that's been for the board, more than the board holds to that. So those issues, we just have to either cut them off at 10 minutes or not assign them.
And Tim had pointed out that we didn't have a clause in the zoning ordinance that specifically required appellants to have a transcript made from the planning commission meeting. So on this planning commission agenda, we're adjusting the appeal procedures to identify that as a requirement. Otherwise, you would not get a written transcript of everything that was said at the hearing, so it's, it's good policy, good practice to have.
They're probably going to pay that, I agree. I mean, we're, we got one right now, but they appealed it, they've not paid for the transcript, so it's just sitting there. And 90 days is ticking if it's an RRO report. It's only, it's only adoption of the railroad anyway, so they get it right over here on that. It's really not something you should appeal for, we can't go over to Kenny there. Please move it, please, Jim.
All right, so we consider proven existing plan permission, so, can you motion approve?
Motion, second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Item 23, order proven plan this to be paid from the court account, motion.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Item 24, order spread of 20 minutes, the personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed in the file with payroll clerk and personnel department, motion.
Motion, second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried, item 25, order confirmed with the county administrative unemployment as listed in the file with payroll clerk and personnel department, motion.
Motion.
Second.
Sir.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried, item 26, order confirmed with the individual. Individual report on employment as listed in the file with the payroll clerk and personnel department, motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion.
See any backup on this?
This is the doctor who worked with Judge McCann overseas.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Placing somebody else, okay, thank you.
In further discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carried, item 27, order concurrent with the road management on employment as listed in the file with payroll clerk and personnel department, motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Item 28, purchasing department, order spread of 20 minutes, the list of emergency local and state contract order issued by the purchasing department for the month of February 2021, motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Copy that.
I'm waiting on that end.
I want to be such a pogg, I feel like I'm.
Well, she jumps in there every time.
Order projected in one only bid, received March 2nd, 2021, from JJ Riches in the amount of $1,777.
$1,777.
$1,777 for the sale of services. I know, my services, put it as detailed below, and authorized the location to the road department for ending the cost requested by a prior team pass open.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
The record's not really a donation, it was a transfer.
Item 30, recognize the chair, as you.
You want to change this?
No, I mean, just the old record.
Transfer.
Chair?
Morning.
Morning.
Total, we have 681, 49 misdemeanors, 107 females, 59 equipped state arrests, and 38 federal inmates.
I do have one thing, Sheriff, if you heard anything, it was brought to my attention in reference to the spring break issue, is there any word on that thing? Hospital coming this April, if you're aware of?
I think so, yeah, I think John Miller was coming over to talk to y'all today.
Executive session.
Okay. Talk, talk about it.
There it is.
So we need to go into executive session on that? I think I'll do one, because it's open, open.
What would be the, why?
If it involves security issues, if it involves security issues, it could be qualified by possession, if the board finds that to be appropriate. That's up to the board.
Can I get a nurse there?
I don't think.
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think.
It is, probably is.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
I think it might be.
You'd have to go in closed session to discuss.
Let's go in closed, motion going, you want to go into now? Motion to go in a closed session, discuss going into executive session.
Second.
You don't need a second.
I think, go ahead, all in favor, say aye.
Okay, if we do it now, we're going to have the people come in.
Shelter, presidential, no actual.
If the mayor's mistake, a motion, we could recess.
Motion. Recession, look better.
Recession, 22nd here.
22nd, that's wait for the next one.
Thank you, Beth, feel better.